Nie trzaskają, stoliki trzaskają do obniada.
Jeszcze Polska nie zginęła, kiedy my żyjemy. Solamobca przemocjęła, szablą odwieżemy. Marsh, marz, dąbrowski, z ziemi włoskiej do Polski. Za twoim przewodem, złączym się z narodem. Marsh, marz, dąbrowski, z ziemi włoskiej do Polski. Za twoim przewodem, złączym się z narodem. Przejdzie Wisłem, przejdzie Bartem, będzie Polakami. Dał nam przykład, bo na partę jak zwyciężać mamy. Marsh, marz, dąbrowski, z ziemi włoskiej do Polski. Za twoim przewodem, złączym się z narodem. Marsh, marz, dąbrowski, z ziemi włoskiej do Polski. Za twoim przewodem, złączym się z narodem. Przejdzie Wisłem, przejdzie Bartem, będzie Polakami. Dał nam przykład, bo na partę jak zwyciężać mamy. Marsh, marz, dąbrowski, z ziemi włoskiej do Polski. Za twoim przewodem, złączym się z narodem. Marsh, marz, dąbrowski, z ziemi włoskiej do Polski. Za twoim przewodem, złączym się z narodem.
Dziękuję, proszę o zajęcie miejsc.
Szanowni państwo, otwieram orczyste posiedzenie Senatu Politechiny Chiłuski. Poświęcone nadaniu tytułu doktora Honoryz Kauza. Miałem już przyjemność witać państwa, więc witam ponownie wszyskich. Ale pozwólcie państwu, że przywitam przybyłego na tę część pana Adama Puselnika, prezydentę miasta. Witam serdecznie pana profesora Jacek Ulańskiego, prowadzący. jeszcze raz słowa powitania kieruje do wszystkich. I would also like to welcome all guests, students and doctoral students of the Wood University of Technology. I would like to welcome the excellencies, the deans of our university, the senate of the Technical University of Wood. Today we are going to confer the title and distinction of the Wood University of Technology to the distinguished scientist Professor Klaus Mullin. Professor Mullin is one of the most eminent contemporary chemists. He is a world authority in supra-molecular chemistry, polymer chemistry and nanotechnology. He is a distinguished scholar as well as an organizer of scientific institutions in Germany and an extremely active initiator of interdisciplinary and international scientific cooperation. His long and effective collaboration with the Technical University of Wood, particularly with the Faculty of Chemistry is noteworthy. The Max Planck Institute of Polymer Research in Mainz, which he directed for many years, is a partner in many of our university projects. One of the most important projects is the creation of the International Center for Research on Innovation and Innovative Biomaterials. Professor Klaus Mullin is the chairman of the International Scientific Committee of ICRI Beyond. By conferring the honorary doctorate, we wish to express our highest appreciation for the professor's outstanding scientific organizational and didactic achievements and at the same time thank him for his longstanding collaboration with our university. Now we are going to open the formal part of our meeting which will be managed by Professor Łukasz Elbert.
Magnificencje rektorze, wysoki senacie, dostojni goście. Szanowni państwo, na podstawie decyzji Senatu Politechiny Chiłuski, upon the decision of the Senate of the Wood University of Technology, our university awards the distinction and title of the honorary doctor to Professor Klaus Mullin from the Max Planck University in Mainz. With the application to award the honorary title to two faculties applied, the Faculty of Chemistry and Biotechnology and Food Science. This supervisor was Professor Jacek Ulański. The resolutions supporting our initiatives were undertaken by the walls of University of Technology based on Alan Grant's decision and the Adam Mickiewicz University based on Professor Bogdan Marciniec's decision. On the 24th of June 2020, the Senate of the Wood University of Technology issued a resolution to award the degree of Doctor Honors Kauza to Professor Klaus Mullin. Now I would like to ask Professor Jacek Ulański, who was the supervisor, to deliver the nomination devoted to the person and scientific achievements of Professor Klaus Mullin, Professor de Floris Jovs.
Your Excellency, Distinguished Senate, Distinguished Professor Klaus Mullin, ladies and gentlemen. Professor Mullin, for many years, has been one of the most distinguished and most influential chemists in the world. To tell it means saying nothing, because Professor Mullin is one of the distinguished scholars. However, Professor Mullins achievements mark new trends of development in organic chemistry. Generally speaking, it is all about advanced material engineering. The successes of Professor Mullin are related to his capability to invent and design completely new structures of nanoparticles. He can forecast their characteristics and properties and actually he is capable of developing synthesis mechanisms that allow for developing such molecules. The synthesis developed by Professor Mullin are characterized by high precision, high accuracy. He also pays a lot of attention to the purity of the materials he receives. His exceptional creativity in designing new molecular structures, but also the accuracy in synthesis and carefulness in purification of these synthesis products makes everybody willing to collaborate with him. I'm telling it on behalf of specialists in physics, material engineering, just like us and representatives of our chair. We all know that the materials we receive Professor Mullin will actually have exactly such characteristics as intended and as required. The successes of common projects delivered together with Professor Mullin and his team result from the fact that the materials he synthesizes fulfill the Tyler Made requirements. At the same time, Professor Mullin pays a lot of attention to making new synthesized materials fulfill specific conditions owing to which they could be implemented in practice in different industry branches. Let me now quote a sentence which Professor included in the introductory chapter and the sentence is: "Do not comment processing and device fabrication before having optimized and ensured the integrity of the macromolecular structure as well as its reliable and reproducible synthesis." When we read Professor Mullins curriculum vitae, we notice a very quick pace of his scientific career. In 1969, he graduated from the Faculty of Chemistry at the University of Cologne and two years later he obtained the doctoral degree from the University of Basel. In 1978, he completed his postdoctoral degrees and was appointed the professor of the University of Cologne in 1979. It is really exceptional in Germany to become a university professor so quickly. It is also an amazing distinction. Since 1989, namely for 42 years, I do apologize, at the age of 42, he became the head of the Max Planck Institute of Polymer Research in Mainz. But in the meantime, he declined several proposals from distinguished universities. Professor Mullin is the author or co-author of about 2100 papers in leading chemistry and multidisciplinary journals. According to Google Scholar, as of July 2021, his publications have been cited more than 140,000 times and that poses certain problem for us, dear professor, because once we had to propose materials for print, that was the status quo. Currently, it is 145,000 citations. The age index increased from 171 to 172 within two months. He delivered over 400 plenary and keynote lectures at the most important conferences and seminars in top research institutions worldwide. When we look at these outstanding figures and citations, it becomes obvious that his influence on different areas of science must not be underestimated. We could also say that working for over 30 years for the Max Planck Institute for Polymer Research in Mainz, he contributed to the development of the institute as now. This is one of the best institutes of that kind in Europe and globally. It is not possible to discuss all scientific achievements of Klaus Mullin in this nomination because they apply to different areas: organic chemistry, polymers and highly advanced material engineering, including conjugated organic materials and carbon nanostructures. Professor Mullin has been able to reveal that there are some drugs from polycycling aromatic carbons to graphene nanoribbons and from conjugated leather type polymers. The research method followed by Klaus Mullin can be traced when we analyze his contribution to the development of graphene materials which especially recently have become the main topic of his interest. Professor Mullin and his team developed successfully both top-down and bottom-up synthetic methods of graphene material development. Now I'm referring to the paper in Nature in 2016. The top-down approach which involves electrochemically assisted exfoliation of graphene is of high practical value. However, the bottom-up approach which comprises fusing small molecules which represent graphene structure or larger graphene sheets, Mullin has introduced several breakthrough concepts. Gradual development of nano graphene synthesis with using the precursors lead to the demonstration that a perfectly synthesized three-dimensional polyphenol precursors can be converted into a two-dimensional graphene through mild cyclo dehydration. Probably the most important and breakthrough achievement in the science on graphene, not only related to Professor Mullins research, but also generally in recent years, is the synthesis of graphene nanoribbons that form a new family of semiconductive materials with open and tunable energetic gap. Graphene nanoribbons with a structure of precisely controlled edge can be traced on monocrystalline surfaces. This is a fantastic and breakthrough presentation which was published in Nature in 2010. Also in, it was also described in Nature Chemistry in 2014. These discoveries opened the new possibilities of using graphenes as semiconductors. For example, in field effect transistors showing extremely high charge carrier mobility. Graphene is known for high mobility, but however graphene as such is not a semiconductor. As demonstrated by Klaus Mullin, it is possible to precisely control electronic states in graphene nanoribbons which can revolutionize material science was initiated by the late Professor Tadeusz Pakua, who came from the Professor Marian Kroszewski's team from the Center for Molecular and Macromolecular Studies of the Polish Academies of Sciences in Wurz.
Tadeusz Pakua was also employed part-time at the Department of Molecular Physics at the Faculty of Chemistry of Wurz. He was also hired in the institute since 1984. Participation in the European Project DIsco in the years 2001, 2003 were... One of the most important materials that we were investigating were the issues that I mentioned before. It was the beginning of a very fruitful cooperation of our cathedral and institute of Max Planck in the framework of bilateral European cooperation. It's also worth to say that in the 80s in Wurz, Tadeusz Pakua and Adam Tracz, who unfortunately deceased is a result of cooperation in the Disco project, which is known for oriented layer of distoric liquid crystals based on benzohexan derivatives synthesized by the Millen Group. This allowed for the production of organic field effect transistors with excellent performance, and the zone casting method is not well used in laboratories around the world. Direct personal ties are currently being continued by Professor Wojciech Pisula and also present here today, a former PhD of Dr. Klaus Millen and Dr. Tomasz Marszawek, a former PhD student of mine. Professor Pisula and Dr. Marszawek are scientists employed in the Max Planck University in Mainz and also partially in our cathedral. Professor Klaus Millen has a special contribution to establishment in Wurz, the International Center for Research on Innovative Bio-Based Materials, Incubion. The origins of this project dates back to the project of European Center of Bio and Nanotechnology. It was developed on the initiative of then rector of Technical University of Wurz, Mr. Professor Stanisław Bilecki, supported by Professor Krzysztof Matyjaszewski from the university in Pittsburgh, also with my participation in the project and with the participation of a team from our cathedral and also from other units, also from the biotechnological department. The project has been adapted to Incubion project. It was developed to... And it was submitted for the first teaming for excellence under the EU Horizon 2020 program. It was developed by the Research Consortium led by Technical University of Wurz and included two Max Planck institutes, for polymer research and for biophysical chemistry. Klaus Millen, who was then one of the directors of MPI Mainz, strongly supported this project. Although the application to the teaming program was not being... Has not been successful, it didn't discourage Professor Bilecki, who obtained the support from Professor Millen and his consent to take over the leadership of the new proposal preparation for international research agenda called MEB Plus, issued by the Foundation for Polish Science, to which Professor Piotr Paneth was also invited as the second applicant. Professor Millen was the driving force of the proposal preparation and also its presentation to the FNP committee. From the memories that we've heard, that were told to us by Professor Paneth, we've learned that an excellent presentation to the interview by Klaus Millen has impacted greatly the fact that the application has been successful. Since then, Professor Millen is participating in main activities of Incubion with major deputy of presiding the International Scientific Committee. This story perfectly illustrates the commitment and dedication of Professor Klaus Millen in creation of the modern international research center in Wurz, closely linked to leading foreign research institutions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Professor, for presenting the curriculum vitae of the honorary doctor of our Technical University and of showing these particular ties that are linking Mr. Professor with Wurz and especially with the Technical University of Wurz. Ladies and gentlemen, now we proceed to the solemn act of bestowing the title and the honorary doctorate of the Wurz University of Technology to Professor Klaus Millen. I would like to ask Professor Jacek Ulański to read out the Dr. Honoris Causa and assemble guests to the text of diploma, which, as academic custom dictates, was drawn up in Latin, as the tradition of our university, and in Polish language. At the same time, I'm asking you to stand up while we read out the diploma. The diploma in Latin is being read right now. Now I invite Mrs. Dean of Chemical Department, Professor Mauroda Żukowska-Jóżwik, Mrs. Dean of the Biotechnology Department, Professor Jan Nadiaż, also the thesis supervisor, Professor Jacek Ulański, and also, of course, the honorary doctor of our university, Mr. Professor Klaus Millen. I am asking the excellency rector, Krzysztof Juźwik, to do the bestowing of Honoris Causa doctorate. In the name of the Technical University of Wurz, I am honored to bestow the Professor Klaus Millen with the... To confer upon Klaus Millen the title and dignity of Dr. Honoris Causa of our university. Thank you very much. And now I'm asking the choir of the Technical University of Wurz to sing.
Dziękuję bardzo.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, because of the special event today, we have received plenty of congratulations letters. One of them came to us from the Prime Minister Councilary. I would like to read a part of that. Ladies and gentlemen, chemistry is and will continue to be one of the most important and most developing domains in Polish scientific life. It has been ranked highly in the worldwide rankings, and I'm sure you are going to train excellent scientists who are going to have an input in the development of Polish science. I am congratulating Professor Klaus Millen, whose years of cooperation with the Technical University of Wurz is being now concluded by conferring upon Professor Klaus Millen the title and dignity of Dr. Honoris Causa of Technical University of Wurz. I believe that after so many years, a person who is similarly great to Marek Skodowska-Kirie is now being created the honorary doctorate, Mr. Prime Minister Mateusz Morawiecki. Similar letter we have received from other excellences. Right now I'm giving the floor for the next speaker, who is going to read out the next letter. Your Excellency, Mr. Rector, Mr. Professor, ladies and gentlemen, who has gathered here at this solemn occasion for our university, it's an exceptional occasion in the name of Ministry of the Minister of Education and Science, Mr. Czarnek. I am going to read out a congratulatory letter. Estimated Professor, please accept congratulations upon receiving the distinction of Dr. Honoris Causa of the Technical University of Wurz. You are a worldwide famous scientist who is specialized in chemistry of polymers and nanotechnology. You are a member of nine German, European, and American academies of sciences and also an author of plenty scientific papers, as well as an organizer of scientific institutions in Germany. I am full of respect to your work and your activities in the scope of interdisciplinary cooperation in between countries. You've been for many years cooperating with the Technical University of Science, especially with the Department of Chemistry. Your competencies, knowledge, and unquestionable authority are reflected in your membership in the institutions all over the world. You are... You've been titled nine times the Dr. Honoris Causa, nine times honorary professor by universities all over the world and many other scientific awards. Congratulating once again this dignity of Dr. Honoris Causa of Technical University of Wurz, I wish you all the best and further achievements. With all due respect, Minister of Education and Science, Przemysław Czarnek. Thank you very much. Now I invite Vice Mayor of the city, Adam Postelnyk, to take the floor. Mr. Rector, Your Excellency, Professor Millen, ladies and gentlemen, before I congratulate, I would like to say a couple of words about this aura which is in this place. about this aura which is in this place. You know the place where we are gathered much better than I do, but this investment is really incredible. Sixty-five million Polish złoty is invested in Alkinium Building, around fifty million of donation from the side of ministry. Mr. Rector, I hope that it's just the beginning because with such investments and such a big pressure and priority that we devote to the sciences, the future of our city depends. I am sure that these types of projects which we are using today, the future of our city, the future of our state depends on. I am crossing my fingers and I am sure that the Technical University of Wódź is going to be on the top of the universities in our country. So huge congratulations to the whole of the Technical University. Right now, let me congratulate Professor Mühlen. Mr. President is speaking in German. Vice Deputy, Vice Deputy Meyer is speaking in German, congratulating Professor Mühlen.
Before I will give you the congratulations letter from Mayor Zdanowski, I would really like to say that I'm super impressed after I've read your accomplishments. Unfortunately, I am sure that I will never have equal accomplishments. However, you are very inspirational and people like you give us a place where we can reach. So congratulations for all your accomplishments. It's my great honor to give you this letter.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you very much.
Dziękuję bardzo, Panie Prezydencie. Bardzo serdecznie dziękuję. Zapraszam bardzo serdecznie jego magnificencję rektora Tofina Jesienowskiego, przewieńczącego Konferencji Rektorów Polskich Uczelnii Technicznych i członka Prezydium Konferencji Rektorów Akademickich Szkół Polskich. Magnificencją.
Dostojny doktorze Honory Kausza Politechniki Łudzkiej. Distinguished Doctor Honory Kausza of Wódź University of Technology, Professor Klaus Mühlen. Jest to dla mnie niezwykły zaszczyt i honor, że mogę brać udział w tym niezwykłym wydarzeniu. Osiągnięcia pana profesora są niezwykłe, są imponujące. Trudno je oceniać, właściwie nie sposób je oceniać. Każdy, kto para się nauką, wie, że nie chce mu ulegać wskaźnikom, punktom minimalizowaniu wartości, jakie pan tworzy, ale gdy spojrzymy na te parametry, te wskaźniki, to one są ze wszelchmiar niewiarygodne. Ja miałem zaszczyt spotkać dwie takie osoby, wspomnianego Krzysztofa Matiaszewskiego, który jest związany z Politechniką Łudzką i z Łodzią i nie tylko, i pana profesora.
And Mr. Professor. Szanowni Państwo, nie tylko nauka wyrażona tymi parametrami jest istotna, ale przede wszystkim tworzenie szkoły, inspiracji dla młodych osób, które zaczynają. Young people who are beginning the adventure with science. It's you, Mr. Professor, who is the monument of science for the young people who are inspired by your achievements.
Distinguished Professor, I'm really impressed regarding your achievement. You are a monument of science, you know, let me say. Impact of the science belongs not only to development of polymer science, material science and related aspect of our, let me say, everyday duties, but you have to be an inspiration for the young scientists how to make wonderful world, future for our new generation. So please accept on behalf of the rector's of Technical University of Poland, of Senate of Poznan University of Technology. I hope all audience for your fantastic future and of course, wish winser dia guter gesandheit.
Jeszcze dodam tę sentencję, która dzisiaj padła. Let me add one more sentence which was already said today. The achievements of Mr. Professor can be summarized by the words in Latin. Serdecznie dziękuję. Thank you very much, Your Excellency. I think that the words which come not only from director of technical universities in Poland, but also from the scientist who is in charge of chemistry, admiring the achievements of Professor Mühlen are indeed showing his excellent achievements. Thank you very much, Your Excellency, once again. Ladies and gentlemen, please allow Professor Klaus Mühlen to take the floor.
I think that it's time that all emotions are going down and it's time for you to take it up. So the floor is for you, please.
Well, first of all, my old Latin teacher would be very disappointed that from the laudation, I only stood one word, morgons Jakum mince, but I promise I will study it very carefully. Young magnificency, distinguished Senate Excellency, honorable participants, and when I say that, that includes the students, dear colleagues. Yeah, it is a delight to be here with you, a delight and an honor, but you may want to know right away what is he going to talk about. Today I should like to share with you some considerations about the future of science. So here is my suggested title, "An Old Man's Thoughts About Research", and in parenthesis with special emphasis on chemistry. But let me begin a little bit more personal. I hope it is not too personal. Every summer, my wife and I like to go to the Alps. This is the southern part, close to the Austrian border. We like the mountainside, we like the Barock churches, we like the food, including the dumplings. You know, this is the Bavarian mode of your pierogi. I like the beer, comes in pretty reasonable quantities, and we like hiking. One morning, we were walking up pretty steep hill, it was hot, when a young couple passed by at an astonishing speed. Not very encouraging, of course. But when the young man turned around, what did I read on his T-shirt? Proud to be a chemist. And my mood lifted up immediately. I am also proud to be a chemist and I am proud to be an honorary doctor of the Technical University of Wódź. This is of course why I first of all thank his magnificency, I thank the many decision-making bodies involved. I think of course someone must give a kick. I thank my promoter, Professor Olanski. I thank Professors Biletski and Panet, the guys who brought me here. I am really grateful. It is a remarkable memory of my scientific life. I am, in a sense, was sorry that I missed last year's seventy-fifth birthday of your university. But I was not overly unhappy because 2021 is special for us. Two weeks ago, we celebrated our golden wedding, eleven grandchildren. And a few weeks from now, there will be the fifth, no, fiftieth anniversary of my PhD in Basel. PhD, what does it mean? Philosophical doctor. I am a philosophical doctor because in Basel, the natural sciences are still part of the faculty of philosophy. You know, philosophy and theology are considered as the mothers of all striving for knowledge and cognition. But there is a second coincidence. Like here, the diploma was given in Latin. Only the word "nuclear magnetic resonance spectroscopy", that escaped all translations and had to appear in Deutsch. But let me tell you a third memory, a memory related to aging scientists as me. It was after a long conference day. Uwe Buntz, a former associate of mine, then distinguished professor of chemistry in Heidelberg, Uwe Buntz and I sat on a porch, glass of wine, overlooking a beautiful sunset. He wanted to be nice. He looked at me and said, "Klaus, do you know that you are mentally still quite mobile at your age?" But I was forty-nine at that time. In the meantime, he has grown older automatically as well. Proud to be a chemist. You know, in my country, chemistry comes with a negative touch. It's considered to be unhealthy, dangerous, synthetic, artificial. Whereas nature, by contrast, is regarded as beneficent, charitable, well, heartwarming. When on the riverine, a ship loses some oil, the media speak of a chemistry accident. When two cars bump into each other, converting their kinetic energy, no one speaks of a physics accident. But we live in a world of matter. Whether it's soft or hard, man-made or natural, we live in a world of matter. And there are many, many cases we could refer to. When you digest your schnitzel, when you have a metabolism, when you transport oxygen in your bloodstream, these are all chemical processes. And we could reproduce them in our round bottomed glass vessel. Chemistry is a human and humane science. Let me share with you two highlights, which I find quite convincing in that context. One old, one very recent. It was on New Year's Eve eighteen ninety-nine, festive event of the Royal Society in London. Huge ballroom, chandeliers sparkling with light, ladies dressed up, gentlemen in tuxedos. The president gave a speech and he spoke about a terrible threat. The fear that the world with a nitrite supply from South America running out and the world just without fertilizers would no longer be able to feed its then-one million people. It was chemistry which changed everything. The synthesis of ammonia from nitrogen and hydrogen. And it was also engineering because that catalyzed reaction required ultra-high temperatures and pressures. Much more recent, COVID vaccines were developed in an unbelievably short time and welcomed surprisingly enough even by those who had before been very skeptical about all research on DNA and gene technology. But this major breakthrough was only possible due to a chemical experiment. The isolation and manipulation of messenger RNA and more importantly, its stabilization by encapsulation into a nanoparticle. From a slightly different angle, chemistry occurs in all materials. Silicon, semiconductor in billions of field effect transistors, expert field of Professor Olanski, in the printed circuits, steel, ceramics, plastics. I find it quite interesting that in history, a specific era has been named after the most important material, a material which would well determine the superiority of one civilization over the other. However, let me mention a quote from Stephen Chu. "The fact that the Stone Age came to an end was not due to the fact that the world ran out of stones. Men just found better solutions." But it is then, I believe, understandable what Eiji Kubayashi says, a former head of research of Panasonic. "Those who control the materials, control technology." I think I must make a side remark at that point. The fact that ammonia did not only serve as fertilizer, but after oxidation to nitride, also served as explosive, which made the First World War even more terrible. The father of my father died in the First World War. This fact reminds us of the conflicting nature of all our fighting for progress and development. It may sound trivial when I say that, but we must act responsibly. Let me quote from Gottfried Wilhelm Leibniz. "Research must serve mankind." Along the same guidelines, I think we are all aware of the urgent societal needs nowadays. You may say the usual suspects, but they are nevertheless valid, like health, water, energy, sustainability. I stay away from touching upon any issue separately, although much could be said there. But believe me, nothing, nothing could be solved without the right materials. Except that not all physicists and engineers and investors, analysts, political decision-makers, except that not everyone is aware of that. Now let me move on a little bit. All these thoughts about future technologies raise one key conflict. We are an academia. That is the conflict between fundamental and applied research, even if you are a technical university. Binding fundamental research, which is nothing else than the curiosity-driven accumulation of knowledge, binding it too early to usefulness or even commercial usefulness will kill all creativity. But on the other hand, excluding application from fundamental research is also not responsible. But on the other hand, excluding application from fundamental research is also not responsible. You may have heard of Michael Porter. He said, "There are only two kinds of chemistry: applied and not yet applied." And that is the key idea. In principle, they are two different ways of looking at research and development. One says, "The real disruptive findings, the breakthroughs, have only been made in the freedom of academia." The other says, "For a research finding to become an innovation, it needs more." According to Schumpeter, "An innovation is a creative destruction of existing goods. And it needs to create value. At one point, it must reach the marketplace." We cannot set that aside. Still, you may say, "This guy is talking as a propaganda speaker for chemistry." But I confess that there are two critical further questions. One, is chemistry a mature science? An enabling science, just making one compound after the other, serving physics and medicine, who then furnish the real added value? Likewise, are major chemical companies, that's the other side, are major chemical companies intrinsically unable to be innovative? With the need for breakthroughs coming from elsewhere? I emphasized from the bottom of my heart interdisciplinarity. Chemistry, like its sister disciplines, without losing their core competence, but they must adopt the new digital ways of learning and information handling, because that would allow to fill gaps of knowledge much more rapidly, much more exhaustively, by making one experiment after the other. Industry, on the other hand, needs a new, more system and less much compound-oriented kind of research. What is the main obstacle there? Well, I have been running myself a lab on the premises of BASF in Ludwigshafen. So I am not sure whether I'm going to make myself popular. So if you meet one guy from there, don't tell them. I think this management, which so competently keeps the routine business running and earns the revenues, of course, but that management is not qualified to organize and administer the fostering of research and breakthroughs. Their mindset is not ready for that, as I'm convinced. So universities, and that's my conclusion, universities and companies, and I'm afraid whole societies need a new way of creative but responsible innovation in view of the challenges which we are meeting. Because that's all risky, failure most probably. So investments need to be redirected as well, also private investment. Investors are needed. But what is not needed is oil money being poured into soccer clubs. And that brings me again to acting responsible. And majority of people does not act responsibly. Finally, that is my, probably most important conclusion. Research, when you think about it, proceeds by way of competition. Now, this competition is global. And believe me, for an old society, that is getting more and more difficult. Is anyone in the world having a better solution than you? And when I had to make up my mind whether I would want to stay in academia, that was the most tricky question for me. Would I always want to be compared with somebody else every day? But there is the other point, which I found most striking. In a world led so much by competition, all these strong egos, and here they are. Otherwise, you don't make it to that job. There is nevertheless so much sense of exchange, of collaboration, of loyalty between individuals, between research groups, between universities, between nations. That is for me the most important paradigm for me. I have had the pleasure of finding the right partners, not only with competence, but also in trust. Since its foundation, my institute, Max Planck Institute in Mainz, Mogumsjakum, had many researchers from Poland and in particular from Wurz, Professor Kryzewski, Professor Pakula, Olansky, Tracz, up to today, like Professor Pissular or Dr. Tom McMarshall. They have contributed to the rise of the institute. But this world-famous Mainz-Wurz interconnection has grown into many directions to include, I just mentioned one example, then another third partner, Ette Haziri with Professor Venimos. My associates liked it very much, but what intrigued them even more was that their counterpart on the Swiss side, his name was not Robert, but his name was Lewandowski. And they liked it a lot. Now, then came this chance of teaming. And it is a chance of raising an unbelievable support for us here, and I say "us". The idea is that a research place, eventually a cluster of universities, would connect itself with an institution probably more experienced in performing and managing research. But the entry ticket for such a proposal was a successful proposal at the National Science Foundation. And the Polish FNP wanted that, to have an international input right from the beginning. So the pioneers, Professor Bielski and Panet, watched out for a foreigner with reasonable academic credentials. That was me. And then their proposal was successful. It was successful with their idea of interdisciplinarity, merging biotechnology, polymer science and theory. And it was successful with their sense of international input. So what I hope now, I do hope it, and it's, I think, a good place to mention it here. ICRI BioM under the leadership of Professor Steinbüchel is in the nucleus. But more to come, so let's hope that finally our teaming proposal will be successful. Research, that is my conclusion, but I'm not quite at the end, few more minutes. Research is a dangerous adventure tour. Risky, sometimes frustrating. You start, you never know where and when you end up. But on the other hand, there is also a lot of routine. Classes, committee meetings, proposals, lectures, whatever. Let me tell you how the old Max Planck director escaped his routine. It was on the last few days of his active work, he was close to retirement, and he was invited to give a lecture at a smaller university. He didn't know people personally, they didn't know him. He sat in the rear, his driver getting him there. And the driver had a habit. Whenever his boss would speak, he would sit in the last row and listen carefully. So director said, "You have always, over the years, been listening to what I say. Wouldn't you want to give that lecture?" At the first moment, driver was a little bit embarrassed. "Yeah, why not?" So what they did, they changed director into the uniform of the driver. And the driver gave the lecture. And everything went beautifully. Next slide, you know, you could walk along that. Then came the question-and-answer session. Everything without any problem. You know, the typical question, "Have you tried the reaction at 100 degrees?" But then came one tricky question. Embarrassing. Dead silence. He moved around, didn't know. And then he said, "Well, distinguished colleague, this question is so trivial that even my driver, he is sitting there in the last row, even my driver could answer it." And the driver answered the question. I thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you very much for the beauty. I am very happy that I am a driver. Thank you, Professor Klaus Milen. I am sure that it was a very good solution for a university to give you the Doctor of Horneis Kaus and now you are a member of our academic society. Your lecture was a kind of philosophy, and I was afraid that you wanted to say that philosophy is the tool and parameter describing all professors in the world, in all sciences. But it was really speaking, it was a philosophy of every, I do hope, researcher that wants to be innovative and responsible. I think I have to think twice on your lecture to understand everything, but it was beautiful. Thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen, the solemn and very nice celebration for us has come to an end. We have a new excellent distinguished scholar amongst the society of University of Wurz honorary doctorates. At the end, let's listen to Gaudamus Igitur, because now it's time for us to be joyful. Please, I invite the choir of the Technical University of Wurz, who is under the Marius Schlewe directive, to sing the Gaudamus Igitur. Thank you very much to the choir, which is conducted by Marius Schlewe. Ladies and gentlemen, at the end of this solemn occasion, you may congratulate our new honorary doctor at the foyer. You are also welcome to the foyer. And now I am asking the flagship, the color corpse team, to leave the room.